Okay, it's gone now, thank you. So again, we want to call tonight's meeting to order for Monday, May 10th. Thank you all for joining us this evening for the work session for tonight. I know, Chief, you sent out a revised agenda and I had already printed mine out prior to getting that. So if you don't mind, Chief Collington, can we ask Mr. Tenelli to just share that so that we can move into the approval of the agenda? That way, we can just make sure everybody is seeing the same thing.
Second, let me see if I can do it. Rick Demond asked me the access.
All right. You got it.
Okay, Mr. Tenelli, we're not able to see the agenda. And I realize in this platform, it doesn't give you the preview necessarily before it's shared. Okay, there we go. So if everyone could just take a look at the work session agenda. And is there a motion to approve the agenda?
I said move.
Moved by Councilmember Rowat, is there a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Councilmember Lundie, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it, thank you all so much. So at this time, we'll move forward with the approval of the April 12th work session minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
I said move.
Moved by Councilmember Rowat, is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye. Any nays? The ayes have it, thank you so much. All right, so the next item up on the agenda is a follow-up under Old Business from the April work session. So I did come before the council and share the letter we received from Greenbelt, where they were asking the municipalities of Prince George's County to support efforts for legal representation. And this is for the upcoming deadline of the draft environmental impact study. The information received from the council was to have a community meeting with residents and get input. And there's one plan for this upcoming Thursday. However, I will say, since the last work session, there's been probably 10 different hearings combined with town hall meetings. We've done them in English and in Spanish to capture Prince George's County and Anarundo County residents because we're really trying to have more representation and have more people involved in submitting their comments. Because again, it's not just for the municipalities to submit input. We want residents, business owners, people who are directly impacted to be writing in comments. And so wanted to just again inform you all that town hall is, or not so much a town hall, it's really going to be more of an informal conversation because I'm working with Maryland Citizens for Responsible Transportation on this meeting on Thursday. Ms. McCutcheon will be on there, we'll have another expert with us to help answer questions because there's been a lot of town halls already, as we said, in English and in Spanish. At this point, we just want to answer questions that residents may still have and then help give them some guidance and recommendations on how they can submit their comments. And we just don't want them to feel that it's an intimidating thing, that it can be as simple as you want. Or if you want to do a 10-page response, you're welcome to do that. We just want to make sure people feel comfortable in taking the steps to actually submit their comments. And again, just want to put that ask back out there on the table because since the time of our work session on April 12th, I did attend the April 13th College Park Council meeting where they also discussed the letter from Greenbelt and determined as a council that they would contribute to the legal costs. Because again, that gives them expert guidance, expert review on this lengthy document that we as laypeople don't necessarily have the training to be able to digest fully. And so I do want to continue to advocate that we put something in, College Park put 10,000 in. If we're thinking we can spend a few thousand on events, well surely we can spend at least that to protect our homes, our businesses, our schools, and our community at large from this project. So with that, I'll pause for any comments or questions because I know Councilmember Rowat has also attended the rallies that have been held, I believe, at the Department of Transportation and appreciate that level of support as well in advocating against the MAGLAD. But I'll pause for any comments from staff or the council. Okay. All right, thank you so much. And so at this time, we will move on to a presentation regarding CERT. So this is under Old Business because this may be new to some of us on the call today. However, there was a point in time where the town of Bladensburg had a very strong CERT team. And due to some staffing changes and people moving in and out of town, they became more inactive. And we're at the point, particularly given the large number of emergency situations, whether rather related or otherwise, we're at the point where we really have to prop back up our CERT team. And so with that, Chief Collington, am I turning it over to you or Officer Reinhardt?
Chief, I can take this if you want.
Yes, go ahead.
Good evening to Mayor and Council. Just to give you a little background on CERT, it was actually formed back in the mid-'80s through the Los Angeles County Fire Department, especially right after they had the Woody O'Narrows earthquake. So they found a need for community members to come out and assist public safety members with many logistics that overwhelmed the emergency services. Background on us, the Burt Team, Blainsburg Emergency Response Team. The team was created back in 2005 under the direction of, I believe it was Chief Proctor and Lieutenant Davis at the time through the community-oriented police's office up in Autumn Woods. The town had recently was affected by several emergencies to include right after the September 11th attack. We had the microburst, we had the hurricane Sandy. So it was actually found a need for to get community members involved to assist the police department as well as the fire department to come out and assist us when needed. And the CERT team can also be activated if we have like a missing person or a missing child. If, you know, the community members can come out and give us extra ayes, extra hands to assist the police department in matters like that. It's a core group of volunteers, the old team. It was a core group of volunteers from the town of Blainsburg and also surrounding municipalities. To include, we had some residents in Montgomery County that would come out to our meetings in the CERT team. They would come out on a regular basis, they would do training and do their skills on a monthly basis and meet with Lieutenant Davis and myself. What they're really going to be helping out with is they're going to be able to provide immediate assistance to victims organized, spontaneous, I'm sorry, organized spontaneous volunteers at disaster sites and collect disaster intelligence. It's a very great program. It was really well utilized when we had it before. And I love to see community members and volunteers come out and to assist with the program again. You get a good core group of people that actually come out. We do have some supplies and we actually purchased a trailer back in the late 2000s that's equipped with medical equipment and stuff like that that we could start. I love to see utilized again. Any questions from Mayor and Council? And one more thing, happy belated Mother's Day to everybody, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Officer Reinhardt. I see a question from Councilmember Rowat.
Thank you so much, Mayor James, I'm going to lower my hand. So I am interested in joining as a member of the Town Council to assist with the coordination of this. I do remember when I first was sworn in as a Town of Bladensburg, a Town Council member, that I was asked by a few of my colleagues to lead the initiative on restarting this. So I was waiting for staff support for that. I am a part of the District of Columbia's Behavioral Health Community Response Team. So I do have some institutional knowledge as it relates to government response to emergencies. And I can bring that behavioral health aspect on. So I would love to partner and be providing any type of support to this. I think this is an excellent opportunity to respond to emergencies. As the ready we are, the more prepared we are, the more prepared we'll be able to enact CERT plans and different things. And I have a great deal of knowledge with writing plans as that is the sole concrete foundation of my role for the District of Columbia. So I think this is phenomenal. I think this is well-needed, especially with the many major events that we've had over the last, you know, year and a half. We've had a lot of emergencies and concerns. And so I applaud you, Chief Collington, you, Officer Reinhardt, for reenacting this. And please allow me to be involved, thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilmember Rowat, and I agree. From prior conversations, I've also let Chief Collington know of my interest in being involved in this. I think, one, we've learned in the past, not even, well, I would say the last year, Councilmember Rowat with the pandemic, the flash flood. And then you throw in the fires and different things. I think all of us as a council have seen a lot of emergencies throughout the town. And it's critical that we prop this back up. And so Chief and Officer Reinhardt, I'll follow up with connecting you all to the county CERT contact now that we have a consensus that this is the direction that we are agreeing to move in. So we can go ahead and organize the meeting with them to get specifics on the steps we need to take. And then the second part of that is it'll be important to put a call out, perhaps in this week's e-blast, for volunteers from the community to start compiling a list of people who are interested. And so at least that way in tandem, while we're trying to get the meeting set up with the county and know what our next steps are, we have a pool of interested residents and community stakeholders who'd like to be a part. And I'm just looking around, I don't see any other hands raised. Chief Collington, there we go.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, colleagues. And I'd just like to add to this as well, just to say that this cooperation and collaboration between, you know, the town and the community further strengthens the relationship that we have. And it's not just for disasters, what we call our volunteers, but for all of our special events that we have around town. We like to involve all of our residents in helping out to make these events successful. So I just think it's a win-win for the town and I think the Mayor Council was supporting this. Thank you.
Thank you for that, Chief Collington. So I just jotted down, so next steps would be putting out a call for volunteer circling back to the county about our next steps. Is there any other immediate action items that anyone can think of? Stand no hands, okay. All right, so Chief Collington, if you can help us keep moving forward, we'd appreciate it on that front. The next item to share with the community is we did have our Port Towns quarterly meeting. This is going back about two weeks, I believe, and wanted to give the council an opportunity to report out on some of the discussion items and next steps that emerged from that conversation. So I'll pause for feedback and then jump in. Councilmember Blunt, would you like to talk about the transportation?
Well, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I did send a letter over to Rod Barnes. And Rod, and let him know that I would take the lead for Bladensburg for the Callabus since I'm familiar with the bus and pretty much helped them get started back then. So I'm just taking the lead on that.
Perfect, thank you for volunteering for that. And then want to open it up, Councilmember Lundie, Councilmember Rowat. I think there were some other things that were presented on the call. I see Councilmember Rowat's hand.
Yes, thank you, Mayor James. As discussed on our Port Towns quarterly call, there are a great deal of concerns as it relates to the amount of funding that's needed to support this Callabus initiative. And it seems to be the case that the Town of Bladensburg is the municipality in the Port Towns that has utilized this service the most because we have three buildings that occupy older residents, senior citizens who utilize this bus on a regular basis to get transportation because there isn't adequate transportation within town to take them to, you know, grocery shopping once, you know, once, I think it's weekly or bi-weekly or something. And so, or once a month or something. So Councilmember Blunt knows this schedule very, I'm sure. But I'm a bit concerned as it relates to the amount of funding that we are using to support this because as it's been reported by our Port Towns partners, it's that the bus often breaks down, it's inoperable when a resident get on, it can't go anywhere, the trip has to be rescheduled. And because the bus is an older bus, to my understanding, it's a much older bus, it's not a newer bus. Then there's issues with the coordinator on the bus. Is he working, is he not working during the times? And so we agreed internally amongst all of the Port Towns that there would be some exploration to look at other bus options. For the amount of money that we're paying, we could probably purchase a bus and collectively hire a bus operator to operate that bus so that we can have a wider use. In addition, it's like a five-mile radius. So some of our senior citizens who used the service, they enjoy going to the Laurel location Walmart because it's a wider selection of grocery produce. Then you can walk across the way and go to the Sam's Club. So you can buy like your paper towels, your soap powder in bulk. And so there was just a lot of restrictions placed on this Callabus. And so our partners was talking about exploring different options. The amount of money that we are spending, I think to the tone of $30,000 that we budgeted, it's a lot for the little bit that we're getting. And Bladensburg is contributing the most of this because of the amount of residents. And so we were looking at different funding mechanisms, we were looking at different options, whether to collectively purchase a bus. So there needs to be, I agree to Councilmember Blunt because she has a lot of institutional knowledge, she has years of coordinating, like more than 20 years in, you know, with our seniors and with our three senior buildings, should be our lead on that. But I just really want to impress upon our colleagues that we want to make sure we are using the best, you know, we're using our taxpayer dollars the best. And at this time, I don't think that this Callabus service for the $200,000 to $30,000 is the best you could back.
Thank you, Councilmember Rowat. And it has been stated in the past that our residents, our seniors tend to use it more than some of the other Port Towns. Some of that is just driven by stats. Statistically, we're a larger town, therefore we have more in the senior population and many who don't have personal transportation, and so they rely on that system. And I agree, you're absolutely right, there are so many programs out there that I'm hoping this task force or committee can explore. For example, years ago, Councilmember Blunt may remember this, the county had a program where they would donate old buses that they were phasing out of their fleet to municipalities such as ours. And we went through the process of obtaining two of those buses. However, there wasn't enough community support to put the money in the budget to get that off the ground and running. So those buses had to be returned back to the county, but they're free. And I saw them for myself, these were not in terrible condition. And so if we can go through an opportunity where we're not spending that high capital cost to purchase upfront because that's going to be a significant amount. And I know the budgets of our Port Towns partners are not on par with ours. So we'd probably be in a situation if we're putting up the capital upfront of having to put in more than some of them. And so if there are ways where we can obtain free capital in terms of getting the buses and then we're focusing on getting the programs up and running, it would be great to learn how we can take advantage of some of those types of programs. But I'm looking around the screen and don't see any other hands raised. So Councilmember Lundie?
Yes, so I'm looking at my notes here. We did also talk about, and I believe some things, I know the mayor's going to, you know, bring it all together. But we also talked about continuing our efforts with the Capital Area Food Bank and all of the Port Towns, our partners really appreciated how we are supporting them. So we talked about that as well. And I definitely agree that based on the needs here in the Port Towns that that program really should continue to do our grabbing goes and support our residents through these food giveaways and free giveaways. We also had a discussion about our Port Towns Day, some creative things we want to do with respect to that. We also, one of the things that's important to me, we talked about cleanup, we're going to do partnership with, and I guess you're going to speak more about that, our town cleanup efforts, we're going to work with and partner with an organization, the Denny House perhaps, and another organization that is very popular here in the Prince George's County area. And so very excited about working with that effort. And we also talked about, oh, as it relates to our sustainability, oh, sorry, it's related to our sustainability program. And then one of the, two of the areas, we were also asked as a Port Town, how we want to support and what projects we want to work on. So one of the projects, two of the projects and areas I'm interested in is the environment and the economy. So those are the areas that I'm going to be really focused on as it relates to our sustainability plan. Thank you, Mayor James.
Thank you, Councilmember Lundie. And I saw at one point, Councilmember Rowat had her hand up, Councilmember?
Thank you, I thought we were talking about the bus. And so to bring it back around, I think the committee is going to be focusing on exploratory options. So Mayor James, if you have some institutional knowledge, I'm sure you could just share with Councilmember Blunt. I am aware of the bus that was procured or not procured or something happened some years ago under the last administration. And so just acknowledging that, we just want to make sure that the decision is collective and that there's no one person of the Town Council that's going to be making this decision. But I fully support Councilmember Blunt will be bringing that information back to us so that we can make a collective decision together as it relates to the Town of Bladensburg's next steps. Your back.
I definitely agree. And I think the bottom line is, Councilmember Blunt, we appreciate you stepping up to help in this area and to work with the Port Towns. And I think that we just have to be open-minded. If it comes back and it looks like it's best for us to go our separate ways and do something individually, then that's the decision we have to make. But if there is a collective solution where we can all find a happy medium that works for all of our residents in a fair and equitable manner, I think that you'll find everyone here is on board with that. So again, thank you for stepping up to help in that area. I'm going to, give me a moment here, I'm just switching screens to the agenda because I want to make sure I have. Okay. So next, still sticking with the Port Towns quarterly meeting updates for the community, wanted to go back to something that Councilmember Lundie touched upon, which was one of the presenters on the meeting was Latasha Ward, who is a member of the Prince George's County Reentry Advisory Board. And in her work in that capacity, they also partner with the Denny House, which is a local nonprofit that does a range of things. But one of the programs that they're big on is community cleanups and getting young minority children in particular involved in sustainability at an early age and teaching them about the environment and also having them demonstrate their commitment to having a clean community by doing these series of cleanups. And so I did ask them to just come on the Port Towns meeting, talk a little bit about the program to see if the Port Towns collectively, not just Bladensburg, but all of us would have some commitment to having a few cleanup efforts over the coming months. Now that the weather's getting warmer, we're getting vaccinated, we're still being careful due to COVID, but it's still a good time to be out beautifying our communities. And there seemed to be a consensus for working together and identifying some opportunities where we can collaborate. And we have a number of youth groups already in town, from the Explorers to Reverend Gail's group. So just thought it would be a great opportunity to get everyone on board and say, yes, if we want to do this, then we start with that. And then what I'll do is follow back up with Ms. Latasha Ward so we can go ahead and start identifying and understanding what their next steps are to get these specific cleanup dates on the schedule and work with you all in the respective Port Towns councils to get some things firmed up. Because at least if we can plan to do, maybe it's one in June, one July, one August and September, we can start with that, but we may find people are so enthusiastic, they want to keep it going every other weekend or some other cadence. But at least let's just get it started and well-organized so that we can see the fruits of our labor as we work to keep our communities clean and beautiful. So anything else, Councilmember Lundie, you wanted to add on there?
No, not at this time.
Okay. And stepping back to the reentry piece of their efforts, that was really interesting to have them talk about their efforts for the reentry program. We also had a member of the State's Attorney's Office who was on the meeting with us as well and expressed interest if we want to talk about planning an expungement fair. And again, we can do this as a Port Towns-wide effort, whether we host it or one of the other communities hosts it. But we've seen success with the Chevrolet event and other communities who've done this. And it's pretty low cost in terms of putting this together, just like many of our other community programs. But I wanted to make sure that everyone did hear the fact that they did mention that typically it's about $25 per person to have their record expunged. And the reason that I bring that up is because if we follow up with the conversation with the Port Towns sister cities, I just want you all to be thinking about that. If we have 50 people from Bladensburg, maybe 10 of them have minor offenses that don't require a fee. But for those who do have expungements and do have a fee associated with that, the way that the program directors work is they try to get the municipalities to sponsor that fee so it's not cost prohibitive for someone who's coming out of the system trying to turn their lives around just because they don't have $25. They can't, you know, move forward with the expungement. So again, just wanted everyone to be aware of that as we continue to move forward and further the conversations about having some expungement events in the community. And we did get confirmation too that the State's Attorney's Office would be willing to partner with us on this. And what better partner to have than State's Attorney Aisha Braveboy and her team? I mean, they're incredible. So I'd want to make sure we definitely take advantage of the opportunity to work with her and help some of our residents who just need a second chance. Everyone makes mistakes, but if it's just a matter of giving someone a second chance, let's just do our part. Yes, Councilmember Lundie?
I'm sorry, we, I think also, I did want to mention this and to bring this up that we did, and you all, it's going to come back to your mind because we had the excellent presentation from Mr. Hutching, James Hutching, about his organization IMF Inc., incarcerated males and females, Inc., and how he's doing great work with returning citizens with respect to housing, transitional housing, and how he is supporting his holistic approach to supporting them. um with respect to housing, transitional housing, and how he is supporting his holistic approach to supporting them. Um and so um his job readiness and educational programs, I think on what, May the thirteenth? Um is um incarceration prevention. He, they're having some kind of event or something on May the thirteenth. Um so if anybody's interested in that, any residents interested in that, I'm sure the town can provide it information. I think Councilmember Rout is about to back me up on some stuff too. So anyway, we were very intrigued back then. And if you want to support this organization, if any resident wants to support them, I can put the um um his information in the chat.
Thank you, Councilmember Lundie. I was just about to ask if you could, one of the thoughts, and I'm coming to you next, Councilmember Rout, is um we have our system through Kaiser that Councilmember Blunt connected us with last year. And why am I spacing on the name? Unite, unite us. And it would be great if you could share his information, because as people come to the community action team, if they needed a resource or a contact to find housing, you know, as they're coming out of the system and looking for housing and things like that, it sounds like this would be a wonderful partner to add to our list of vendors. Um so if you don't mind sharing, I'd love to just connect them with um Chief Collington and um Ms. Brooks and Officer Tanksley to to just start that relationship. So we have a formal um working relationship with them. And then um would love to share that information too in the upcoming e-blast if um if that's all right with Chief Collington about the May thirteenth of the uh Councilmember Rout.
Thank you, Mayor James. Um I just wanted to piggyback off of what Councilmember Lundie was saying about um Mr. Hutchins um across the ready males and females dot org. I have um since that Port Towns meeting, I've had about two or three um meetings with him um just to let him know um well, if I want to prepare for the mental health awareness day that we'll be having, that's on our agenda. Because um he will be a speaker and he will have a table um so that he can um tell the town of Bladensburg about um the information and the supportive services that he offers um with that, because um that's a whole mental health mindset as well. When you are incarcerated and you're, you're trying to, you know, do re-enter into the community, you need a lot of support around that. And so he'll be making a presentation. Um so I'll just put a pin in that. But in addition, um I shared with him um our community grant application. Um and just talked to him about that. So I'm not sure if he turned in the application or not. Uh he requested some information. Um but I think all of the organizations that made that presentation and worked with that reentry effort, they all worked together. And he was telling me um that they all collaborate with each other. So with the youth, they sort of, you know, that's, it's true community work that's being done. All three of the organizations working to support um this population um that we really need to wrap our hands and support around them. I also shared with him about our um our CAT team and the work that they're doing around our our youth and our young adults um through our mentoring program and through our other program with the volunteers of the, not the cadets, Chief Collington, help me out. What? Yeah, explorers. There we go. This is Tanelli. I don't know why I forgot. Yeah, but I shared with him about our explorers and things of that nature. So he said he was going to be reaching out to our CAT team. Um um just to, you know, further understand about that. So um it was, it was definitely a great meeting. We learned a lot of information. Um and I'm looking forward to see if we could be able to work with all of these organizations. And yes, my sorrow, I used to, Aisha Brave Boy. I knew her before I got involved in this, and she is an absolute phenomenal person. Um um just working in the field of public defense. All right, you're back.
Thank you for that information, Councilmember Rout. And so that completes the um old business to um for today. I think we're over to new business now. Um but I appreciate everyone just chiming in and sharing information under those items. Good information being shared indeed. And just because, well, while we're transitioning over to the budget, I want to piggyback on what Councilmember Rout said with respect to the grant applications. Um I don't believe we got very many in. And I think Mr. Tanelli, when I look down here, my clue was town community grant for future agenda item. So I think you're right, Councilmember Rout, if um if we can share that application. Or no, I'm sorry, you said he's already been in touch and has some follow-up questions. So hopefully um he and the other organizations can get theirs. And I will follow up with Ms. Ward and Ms. Denny to make sure that they apply as well.
We had some come in Thursday and Friday with the being so close to the meeting. I, I want to say they did. It's like a longer name. It's like a longer um um it, it's a whole formal name, I think, you know, but um we had some come in and there was not going to be enough time to review them and disseminate all the information and do all the background work by today. So.
That makes sense.
Yeah, so. Do the elegance, like I said, with the chief on it, you know, um with the grant committee, I should say. So um I think I see everybody here that's on the grant committee, so.
Great. And so next up, we have the FY twenty-two budget discussion, so I will turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. Um give me one second to getting better at this. Okay, um where where we left off last week on the third is we did the revenues budget. And we started the administrative department budgets. Administrative departments are are our smallest unit. About eighteen percent of our total budget. They're the backbone. They are the behind the scenes. Um and this includes a mayor and council, the town administrator department, the town clerk and finance department. Um we went through the mayor and council budget. Um there was um I'll walk back a little bit. We're talking about the Port Towns call bus. This is online number. I'm sorry, um that is in the town administrator budget. Um I just want to touch on that real quick. We have incurred about thirty-two thousand dollars of cost through the third quarter. And probably expect this to be over forty thousand dollars this year. Um the ridership, but I should have chimed in earlier. I I was trying to pull my notes up. The ridership, um as you said, we constitute that eighty percent, eighty-five percent of the ridership. So all the fixed expenses and variable expenses, expenses for your driver, the um the benefits, the fuel, repairs, and it's an older bus and takes a lot of repairs, so larger vehicles. So when they're all repairs, repairs are costly because of the age of the vehicle, the size of the vehicle. Um last year, two years ago, when we did a cost analysis on this, I want to say that we were paying close to twenty-eight dollars per ride. Um because it's a high-cost service for a low volume. Um I would say a lower volume, you know, um not subscribership, but uh ri- ridership. You know, if we were doing the same amount of rides, eh like the same amount of trips with thirty people on there versus onesies and twosies or three or four people at a time, then that spreads the cost out more. But you know, we're making special trips, you know, because you know, as a mayor said, um and council members said, we don't have, you know, um a big public transportation backbone here. Um so and, you know, as a town, we're providing that infrastructure piece. And speaking of that infrastructure piece, if that is infrastructure, that's something that we may want to um see if anything qualifies here with some of that COVID relief plan act. Um just an idea, you know, especially mayor, as you said, you know, the initial, the capital costs are the most expensive piece. Um the ongoing cost, but you know, the capital cars cost are eh is your largest investment. And as I, as I said last week, you're, you are allowed to transfer funds between nonprofits and other governmental entities. So just something to put in our back pocket for now, you know, once we solve the problem today. Um it sounds like you're already working on it, but just from a financial perspective, there are some, there could be some options. So I was saying there are off, that there could be some options, but what I'm finding out is this service is getting more expensive. Um that's on the town's budget, so um we'll get to that in a minute. So, any questions on that? Yes. You're on mute.
Okay. For that transportation through COVID.
They still had um, they're still using the bus and still had the same fixed charges. And that's one of the things I took up uh with the other Port Towns partners. Um we were discussing, and you know, it's they didn't, we're paying full, full cost for the ri- for the driver even through COVID. And they're, and they're building the other Port Towns. Um and we're going back to them. There was some lengthy discussions about that. Um but they said they already had the um, they already, they already made the commitments. I forget the exact language, but um we're still paying for this.
So they, so they actually made a commitment without talking to, I guess, maybe you at that time to have us to pay for something that was not working.
Yes, basically, yes. Um and I held that, I I think we all held that bill for a while. We're going back and forth. Um yeah, eh there was um a lot of discussion about it.
Because they were complaining about a hundred and forty-five dollars, and you said we paid nineteen thousand. Wow. Okay.
Yeah. And they're also getting repairs done at the same time uh during COVID too. So the costs just kept coming in. I'm like, oof, you know.
Mr. Tanelli, a question regarding that. So I had a note um that there were about seven thousand in maintenance fees. Is that correct?
I have that in front of me, but that sounds right. That sounds.
So Councilmember Blunt, that's just one more thing for the discussion when you have with them, seven thousand in maintenance fees.
And they only have one, I think they only have one bus, is that correct? So when it's down, it's down. And you know, when it's down, we're still paying for a driver, even though it's down. Or, you know, the Port Towns, I I say we, it's Port Towns, but you know, as the mayor said, I mean, we're the largest contributor. So, I mean, it's a great program. It's just, you know, for an area this size and the ridership, it's uh
Well, actually, uh Emerson House, um and I'm not gonna hold um hold this up on that, but Emerson House rode the bus way more than probably when it rains, so go figure. Ten people that, I I don't know. Okay, still. It is what it is. We have figured out.
And Councilmember Blunt, if you want to talk offline more about that, I can do a brain dump of anything that I I know of that might be helpful before you sit down and meet with the Port Towns partners.
Okay, um I want to touch back on the mayor and council budget. Also had this on the agenda as well. Uh we had some discussion about the community events last time. And I just jotted some down, just want to try to get to some sort of, you know, not agreement, but just make sure I'm capturing everything that we talked about last meeting and see if we need to add anything else. Because we had the community events uh budget twelve thousand dollars before is budget thirty thousand to include the fireworks. And then we walked it back. Um raised a little bit now to twelve thousand, but we talked about doing I'll pull this up real quick. Give me one second. Please be it. Everybody see this? Excel doesn't show up that great, so Rick has a look on your side.
Looks good.
Okay, I'm trying to get a little bit larger. Counsel, can you see that okay? Okay, um I went from twelve thousand, I said, let's go ahead and put forty-two thousand dollars in as a placeholder. Um that captured some of the events that that we talked about last week. Fireworks, I'm gonna put it on the side, but not cheap, maybe I'll talk about fireworks, what he's heard too, but get to this real quick. Senior picnic, mental health awareness. And miscellaneous four thousand, we talked about that last week. There's so many pop-up events that happen during the year that um folks want us to cooperate with them. Um and we do have a lot of those. Actually, four thousand might be a little bit light. But I was at thirty-three thousand. I I thought we talked about going to forty-two thousand, so I don't know if anybody came back with any uh eh any other ideas. Let's move around.
Um I am um leaning more towards five thousand for mental health awareness. I don't want to, I mean, I know I said fifty-five hundred with the estimate. Oh, yeah. So, yeah, we can just round it down. Um because uh and my justification is, is that I would be serving, my target would be serving as the same target, just a different population of the seniors. And so I didn't want to go a lot more. Um and through the process, we're, we're finding different ways where we probably won't even spend that um this fiscal year, because we're, we're looking at a lot of, we're getting a lot of things donated, right? Like I was able to um secure tables that would be donated today. Like, so there's things that will be donated. So, yeah, if five thousand would be adequate. Um and instead of prayer week, I think we should consider just like a lay council. Um because not specifically for the prayer week, but as it relates to the lay council um that Councilwoman Lundie, yeah, was doing, because it's not specifically for the prayer week. I'm I'm, is that okay, Councilwoman Lundie? Like, I don't want to.
Yeah, so thank you so much, Councilmember Rout. I was gonna speak to that. Mayor James, can I, do I have the floor?
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Lundie, for that. Uh it's over to you.
Oh, thank you. Um so, yeah, um Mr. Tanelli, if we could change the prayer week to the um lay council, because this is a committee. And I'm looking at, just the estimate right now, I would say, what? Because we're looking at just the giveaways right now, while we in the virtual space, like, you know, um giveaways maybe, or gift cards or what have you. So I'm, I'm gonna put estimate there for three hundred dollars. And then I also want to add for the green team. I want to add that as well. Okay, so for the lay council, you can put the three hundred dollars there. And for um green team, the same amount, three hundred. It may be a little bit, no, I'll put a little bit more because it may be printing involved, because I'm.
I may just round up to five hundred each, just to keep.
Thank you so much, just to get it in the budget. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mayor James.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilmember Lundie, for those additions. And um Mr. Tanelli, just looking at the time, it's six eighteen, so um these are important, but I definitely want to get into some of the higher priorities if we just move forward.
I may just change it to thirty-five thousand. Um I think that's going to be adequate. Um because that, that gives us six to um to cover any over just here for the fireworks and any other events that'll come up during the year. So if that's okay to Mayor and Council, just as a placeholder for now. Okay, so I went through the mayor and council budget. Um so now we have the the town administrator budget. Can everybody see this okay on your side? Okay, um I, I can't see you all, so I'm facing over here. So if you have a question, somebody's got to call it out. I I saw that one, yes.
Will do.
Yes, thank you, uh Mr. Tanelli. I know you're not there yet, but I'm looking at, I know that um advertising in the website. I know we have for um the website budgeted four thousand. I would like to imagine that it's going to cost a little bit more since we're going to have to start from scratch. Um and so I would like to propose increasing that to maybe like six. And then also, um I remember when you um served as acting town administrator, you were um highly suggesting that we talk more about the, there's some system that collects minutes and things of that nature so that we could all use, it's like minutes and resolutions or something like that, that another municipality uses. Yeah, and so I want, I didn't see that reflected on this document. And so I wanted to remind us that that's something that we really need. Because the man hours as it relates to typing those and making sure, um I actually experienced a demo um for my, my full-time role, and I think it's pretty cool. I don't know if it was the same exact company, but it was like a similar service. Um and I think that we should truly highly, like, we should really do that. Because the man hours with recorded minutes and all of that stuff, it just gets, it's just, we could be using, let's just bring us up to the twenty-first century. You're back.
Thank you, Councilmember Rout. And to the first um point that you made with respect to advertising in the website. So the website is being worked on in the current budget cycle. So So, um, that will be exhausted. Mister Tenelli, correct me if I'm wrong. I'm going back to prior meetings where, um, you were saying Ms. McDowell is currently working to get a new website up. So my understanding is that's coming out of fiscal year twenty-one. Therefore, any monies for fiscal year twenty-two would be the ongoing maintenance. We wouldn't have to bump that line item up.
Theoretically, yes, on the, on the ongoing maintenance. Um, I think chief wanna weigh in on this.
Or Chief Collington?
Uh, yes, I, I took my hand back down, uh, because I, I wanna make an announcement a little bit later on. Um, in regards to the website. I wanna provide an update. Uh, if you want the update now, I can give it to you now.
Yeah, if you don't mind, chief, just since we're on that.
Okay, uh, as of today, the website is up and running. It is live as of today. Um, it take a minute. I can, uh, send out the link in a minute in the chat. Uh, but you can click on it. It is, it's still in its early stages, but it is live. Where we can now keep our, uh, residents and community, uh, advised and engaged and as well as informed. Thank you.
That's awesome.
Yeah, that's great. Thank you, Chief Collington. Uh, so Mister Tenelli, I'll leave, uh, turn it back over to you, cause councilmember did ask some questions.
Yeah, so as you're saying, mayor, um, we're hoping that website will be done soon to capture all of these fees in the current fiscal year, which we had a budget for. Um, that's great news, chief. Thanks for sharing that. That's really great news. And councilmember route, you're talking about the outreach software. That's something we want to, I've, I've been talking to the chief. We, we want to institute, institute that as soon as possible, but we have some other priorities right in front of that, including the phone system.
Mister Tenelli, I'm sorry. She was referring to the software.
Yeah.
Where, uh, um, no, for the minutes. I forget the budget docs or something.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah.
Um, we will get the phone system in first and then we're gonna go back to getting that software up and going. So that's on our radar right now to do as well. So I'll make sure that that's reflective in the budget as well. Um. Okay, I'll go back up to the, I check my time here, six twenty-three. Um, the town administrator budget. Uh, I have the town administrator in under, um, the compensation here. We, you see the budget here is not really changed at all for next fiscal year. Because this fiscal year, the position has been vacant, but I, I have had the marketing specialist, um, classed in here for now. Um, but the actual town administrator position has been vacant. Um, and the marketing po- position is gonna be under the clerk. So this increased, uh, from FY twenty-one because I had added the, the health insurance benefit. The previous town administrator, um, didn't need health insurance benefits. I assume this one will, so I put them in at the higher rate, just not knowing that. So, uh, I, I wanna go ahead and capture that. I'm not sure the competent, you know, all this is being worked out, so. This is a budget. If it's too much, not enough, it's something that, you know, the mayor council can come back to. Let's try to keep it consistent with, with the previous year. Some of the other things, um, blue column is the FY twenty-two budget. You see the differences here. Pick up anything tuition reimbursement. Um, I didn't know if that was needed or not. Again, we're not sure with this position. Um, professional development, uh, I, I believe that was looked at to be reduced at one point. Again, all of this can be adjusted. I mean, the, these are the smaller amounts here. Getting back up to larger amounts, we talked about the transportation, the Port Towns call bus, it's thirty-eight thousand dollars, maybe a little bit light. If we could stay with the current structure, may have to increase this to forty-two thousand, even forty-four thousand. I didn't know that until we got the, the third quarter bill in last week. So, um, that was a shocker too. Legal, I kept consistent, even though we had, um, our legal costs have been very minimal this year compared to previous years. We've only spent twenty-seven percent of the budget. Um, it's probably closer to, to thirty percent now when the last bill came in. Contractual services, this is something that, uh, we need to look at, uh, because we need to look at doing a five-year strategic plan. And for other contractual services as well. The advertising budget, um, we went ahead and stepped this up. Um, it was a higher budget before. We backed this off, but, um, increased it for sending out surveys, flyers, doing our quarterly newsletters. The newsletters are pricey. Um, they're pricey, but they're, they're a very good tool. And I, I just wanna make sure that we have enough in here to cover any mailings, postcards, anything that we wanna get out to the residents. Last year, we, we had some grand opportunities to cover this. Um, as everybody returns, gets back to work and steps up again, you know, the town can go ahead and step up their engagement as well. And website we talked about, um, councilmember route, I may look at adding some to this, depending on what the hosting, you know, with the ongoing maintenance is versus what it, you know, the, the town can do. I'm not sure about all that yet, so. And, uh, capital outlay, I took this out. Um, there was, um, some money in there for office furniture, but we had a lot of office furniture donated last year that we're still working through. So overall, you can see it's basically no change versus the FY twenty-one budget. Budget year, um, to FY twenty-two. And again, all this can change, you know, so as we go through the search process. Any questions on this one?
No questions.
Okay, town clerk. Um, this is a conversation for town clerk, uh, town secretary or, or marketing specialists. And when we do have our interns, um, this covers the compensation here. Um, we took the summer interns out last year and added them back in. That's why it went up a little bit more, that five percent versus like the normal coal and merit. The health and dental, um, that's based on enrollments. Um, and that's a nice way of saying also that it's based on, um, age bracketed too. So, um, you think with, you know, with the people enrolled in the health plans, um, it, it's less expensive for, um, people with a lower age, so. And a, a void compensation budget increased four percent versus this fiscal year projected to next fiscal year. Professional development and not knowing what's gonna be needed there, as you can see, this was underutilized. Um, but we've also ha- have not had a clerk in that position for the last seven months, so that's a big part of it as well.
I have a question, Mayor James.
Yes, thank you, councilmember Lundie for speaking up. Go ahead.
No problem. I saw you were looking at your notes. Um, yes, uh, Mister Tenelli, do we have any, um, documentation that shows us when we were active, you know, doing what we're doing? As relates to personal, professional development for our, um, secretary, marketing special and marketing specialist? Do we have any data as respect to the training that they have had? Or suggested training that they may need based on performance evaluations?
Um, I don't have that in front of me now. I can pull, uh, uh, chief and I can pull that for you.
Yeah, I would like to see that. I don't know about the other council members, if they could chime in if they would like.
And maybe on the performance evaluations, that's, you know.
Right, that's personnel related, but, um, Mister Tenelli, and going back on the three-year budget comparison. It looks like under the town clerk budget, which was inclusive of the receptionist and the clerk. FY nineteen, there was fifteen hundred for, um, professional development. FY twenty, there was two thousand. Um, so, but it doesn't, again, this is just a, what was budgeted, it doesn't show the actual. So it might be nice if you, if you could just send us a quick chart with what the budgeted amount was, what the actuals were, so we can see the spending against those amounts. So for instance, if fifty percent of the money isn't being utilized, then that might be a, um, a cost savings in that area and same for the others.
I have a follow-up, Mayor James.
Sure, councilmember Lundie.
Thank you. Um, I understand that, excuse me, I understand that it is a personnel, um, matter. Um, based on, um, moving us closer into the twenty-first century. And as it's some time ago, we talked about cross-training and all of that. And so that's why I'm interested to find out, um, have there been any recommendations for the, um, is it a receptionist or secretary? I'm sorry. Uh, uh, Mister Tenelli.
Um. I'm not sure.
What is the actual position? Is it a secretary or a receptionist?
Uh, I call it receptionist. I don't know what the actual per se title is.
Okay, so that's why, um, I just wanted to find out, is there, are there any needs? Has, has there been any needs assessment, like, without getting too personal into their personnel stuff, but just to, you know, to see, you know, do they have any recommendations for any training that they may need as respect to what the mayor said? Would be good to see those numbers as well. Um, but I, you know, do I can, so I can kinda gauge if this is a, if this is even a good cost to split between these air, these, uh, positions with respect to professional development.
I just look back, uh, since, um, July two thousand seventeen, we spent just over twelve hundred dollars total over three fiscal years, so eighteen, nineteen, four fiscal years.
Okay, so I'm willing to work with, um, you and, um, acting town administrator Collington to better get an idea, if that's okay. All right, thank you, Mayor James.
Thank you, councilmember Lundie. And, uh, Mister Tenelli, so it's six thirty-three. I know we.
Yeah, some more questions, I know.
Uh, well, we still had a few other new business items, so just wanna make sure that we have a couple of minutes at the end to get to those, so.
Stop or we look at the next department time, but I think, uh, councilmember route and chief Collington also have some questions too.
Mayor James.
Councilmember route, yes, ma'am. Go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mayor James. Um, Mister Tenelli, and looking at the town clerk position, um, I'm, it's position, not a position, um, budget. Um, I'm looking at the, I know the equipment, looking at the copier lease. We have an old, broke down, it breaks down often copier. And a lot of times it gets overheated and it kinks out on us. I know Mayor James and I have been in the town hall when we needed to print some stuff for the census and we had to run next door to the police department and borrow this. Um, I really would like to bring us back to the twenty-first century to see if we can maybe upgrade that or something. I don't think that's enough money to get us, um, maybe a, a newer lease on a newer machine. But I think it's about time to upgrade that dinosaur. Um, yeah, so if you, we could look into that or something because it's, we need it. I think it's, it's about time.
Talking to, to somebody right now that is under state contract, so, um, I, I, I have to check the state contract to make sure they are actually under state contract. Because this machine, I think, is up, the lease is up in either next month or July finally. You know, so we're, we're gonna have a big party and wheeled out the door, you know, so, um, that's.
Can we burn it? Can we burn it? It is awful.
Bring the cookies in the punch.
Okay.
I'll bring that, okay?
Seriously, and then the other.
Free to good home, you know.
Right.
Um, yeah, uh, we have gotten every pending, every bit of use out of that, let's just say, so, um. And we, I think we leased that at the end of twenty sixteen, so it's a five-year lease and we're coming off of that right now. So, yeah, oh, yeah, we live, yeah, thank you.
And Mister Tenelli, after chief, I'm gonna go. Go ahead, Chief Collington.
Uh, Mayor, I, I decline, uh, I'll pass. Thanks. I was just gonna add, just say something about the training that, uh, for the civilians.
Yes, please, go ahead, cause, um, that would be helpful. I know councilmember Lundie was touching on that earlier.
Well, I can say that the civilians over on, on the, uh, east side have gone, um, uh, um, Ms. Green just completed the public information, uh, training. Um, Ms. Adams has just completed the, uh, records management, uh, training. And Ms. Courtney Brooks just completed a media, um, training. So we are, you know, trying to bring up our, our civilian staff as well, so that they could be, uh, better proficient than what they do every day as well. So I, I've, uh, just sent the text to our training coordinator, acting corporal Thompson, and asked him to give me a list of all the training that we've done for the town.
That's perfect. Thank you. Thank you, chief. Councilmember Lundie, go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank, thank you, thank you, Mayor James. Thank you, chief. That's wonderful. And I would like to see that same thing on, on the non-police staff. That's what I was asking too. So, yeah, I wanna see, because I can't even say if this is enough money for training for two thousand, for FY two-two. I don't know what, you know, I don't understand. Yeah, so that's all. Hope it's not too hard, but if it is, we gotta get it done. Okay, thank you, Mayor James.
Absolutely. Thank you, uh, and thanks for raising that question. So, um, Mister Tenelli, we'll turn it back over. Sorry?
Uh, do, do we keep going on the administrative departments? I have finance left. Um, or do we want to wait and do that with public safety on another day?
If we could, because I know we have another budget meeting coming up on the seventeenth.
To as well, if you don't mind, pull the agenda back up here. Um. Uh, just to. I'm sorry, I'm slow with this. I'm trying to get better with it. I need a controller here. Um, I do wanna leave time for the, for, for the other pieces here as well, so. Um, the additional budget work session. Oh, mayor, is it okay to stop there then? I'm sorry.
Yes, unless, um, anyone has heartburn, they want veto to continue. You can't live without going through another department. Okay. I mean, I just wanna check. I just, and also I feel like it's better breaking it into pieces too, because at least for our residents that are on and that were on previously for the budget meeting, we're breaking it into chunks. So as we go along, we're doing a few budgets at a time so they can take notes, send in their comments versus over, overloading them with everything all at once. So, um, again, understanding.
Touch on what we talked about before when we get some more info too.
Exactly, exactly. And to that point, same thing with the website developer. If, um, you or Ms. McDowell could find out what are the maintenance fees for next year, so we're not just throwing a number in there. Um, there's no sense in putting a lot of resources there if it's gonna be half what the development cost was to get the new site up this budget year. So that would be helpful, but I'll turn it over to you, cause as you said, we do need to talk about the next work session.
Um, the next work session. Give me one second, everybody. It's coming up. I'm looking right at it. There you are. Sorry about that. I have a new PDF software. Let me show one window at a time. Um, we have the what was slated was a May seventeenth work session, which is next Monday evening. Uh, councilmember route, I believe you, uh, indicated last meeting, we may need to do additional work sessions. But so far, this is what is on the agenda and always say, you know, others to be determined, obviously. This isn't set in stone. This is just something to get on paper. So our next one is sl- is slated for next Monday and we will get through all the departments by then because we, what we have left is a finance department, our treasurer's department. Pu- uh, public safety, which is gonna be the bulk of it and public works. Public safety and public works are our largest departments because we always say we're a service industry. They're the ones that provide the service. Um, so I think they are, you know. Um, so I think they are, you know, they deserve a time to themselves.
And it looks like we have a question from Councilmember Rout.
Thank you, Mayor James. Mr. Tenelli, yes, I do think that we do need to have, um, after we review all of the, you know, the department, um, I really want to be able to hear from our residents as it relates to, you know, things that we found out. Um, so maybe, I don't know, if we could choose Saturday or something? Um, so that we can hear some feedback from our resident, and that would just be like a listening session or something. So our residents can provide, you know, like active engagement and our feedback, so that was just a suggestion, you're back.
And thank you for that comment, Councilmember Rout. I know last week in the budget work session, I did mention the fact that since we're having, um, tonight's meeting, the meeting on the seventeen and the, um, the May third meeting, I think that was, on Monday nights. To Councilmember Rout's point, I asked if we could put one on a Saturday morning, just to vary it um, and capture hopefully some of the residents who have a difficult time attending these meetings in the evening. So, um, that typically is where we have the community input. For instance, I remember last year when we did the Saturday meeting, uh, it was for that very purpose. We'd gone through all the budgets and that Saturday morning meeting, I think we had it at ten AM, and it was our first time doing it virtually, but it was for the community. Now to the residents, unfortunately, no residents joined. So, we're doing this for you all and we're really asking that you attend and give us your feedback. This is our opportunity to hear from you because you've had the chance to hear every single line item explained, discuss the back and forth with our questions and to give your input. Um, and I thought we had tentatively set a date for the Saturday morning, um, option of May twentieth. Am I remembering that correctly for ten AM?
Uh, May twenty-second.
May twenty-second, sorry.
Yeah.
Yep, there we go. But I do wanna ask, does that work for, um, everyone? I'm just trying to see the boxes. Councilmember Blunt, you have a conflict all day on that Saturday? Uh, I'm sorry, I know you unmuted, but we couldn't hear.
Um, I can't attend on the twenty-second, I have a funeral. I've got my, so now.
Okay. Um, Councilmember Rout, did I see your hand?
Hmm, yes, Mayor James, I know we have, um, we were invited. Um, my, all of the town council members were invited to the Bladensburg Elementary Community Beautification or something. I believe it was in the morning, uh, with, um, Board Member Adam Stafford at Bladensburg Elementary. That's what I have on my schedule, so maybe afternoon, I'm not sure. So, I just wanted to bring that to you all's attention, you're back.
Thank you, and then the following week, which is the twenty-ninth, is the Community, uh, Mental Health Awareness Event, so, um, not just because that event is happening, but I know typically when you do those events, there's a lot that go into setup and getting things ready, so I'd hate to double up on the same day. But would that afternoon, I don't have the time.
I'll say, or is June fifth too far out?
June fifth, yeah, that could work. Are we thinking, um, ten AM, nine AM?
Nine AM.
Seven AM?
That's even better.
I'll buy you coffee, I'll send it to all of your doors, seven AM. Extra shot of espresso, no, no take.
Before, so anytime after that is fine.
Wait, I can't see, uh, Councilmember Lundie's face, she might have said yes to seven AM. Nope.
That's fine.
Up early, no, but, um, on a serious note, would nine or ten AM work?
Ten AM will be fine for my schedule.
Okay, Councilmember Lundie, I see you next, okay. Councilmember Blunt?
Yeah, anytime work for me.
All right, Councilmember Mendoza? For June fifth at ten AM?
Yeah, should be no problem.
Okay, thank you. All right, I'm coming back up. Councilmember Rout, yes.
Um, yeah, so that is also the rain date. Um, so we, we, for the Mental Health Awareness Day, but I'm, I'm sure that if we are gonna bump into, if, if it doesn't rain on the twenty-ninth and we have, I would, I would still like to proceed with the budget session, but I just wanted to announce that. So we may have a competing, I don't think it's gonna rain on the twenty-ninth though, so, I just wanted to announce that.
Thank you, that's the rain date. Okay, all right, so Mr. Tenelli, um, if you wouldn't mind just working with Ms. McDowell to make sure that the notification to the residents goes out in plenty of time so they can also plan for it, um, if it can be included this Thursday and just the reminder each week afterwards.
And I'll talk to the chief and, you know, we, we have a nice mobile messaging board as well that, um, you know, was used for community notifications.
Perfect, all right, and so, um, six forty-seven, okay, so I want to just pivot to, uh, the next item, which was the May Peace Mental Health Awareness Day, that was Councilmember Rout's agenda item.
Thank you, Mayor James. Uh, Mr. Tenelli, I, or Mr., um, Mr. Rick, could you allow me access to share my screen? So I just have a quick PowerPoint to share as it relates to the Mental Health Awareness Day. Evening, everyone. Um, so this is a flyer for our May Mental Health Awareness Day. Thank you for, um, Ms. Diana McDowell, um, so this will be the My Peace Mental Health Awareness Day. And my piece stands for something, I'll explain that in a little bit. Um, the rain day, as I just shared, is June fifth, but this is happening Saturday, May twenty-ninth, from twelve PM to two PM. Um, it'll be outdoors in our David Harrington Park. Um, so what is the My Peace Mental Health Awareness Day? Um, it's gonna be a free one-stop community event during the National Mental Health Awareness Month that will allow individuals to relieve, to receive holistic services at an all-inclusive site. The purpose for this event is to let the town of Bladensburg residents know that help is available for those that are impacted by issues that affect their quality of life to increase COVID vaccine awareness and participation. And so what we know is that COVID nineteen has really debilitated people. People are scared to go out, people are isolating themselves. They also have lots of mental health issues as it relates to the public health emergency. So what does my piece stand for? Well, it's an acronym, um, and it looks at the eight dimensions of, um, health that, um, SAMSA, on the Substance Abuse Mental Health Association, is a, a federal organization that solely purposes, that their sole purpose is to, um, provide guidance, funding, resources, uh, for mental and substance use abuse services. And so they have what's called an eight dimensions of wellness. Um, and so this My Piece is an acronym that stands for things that represent or make up a whole well person. And so money, um, awareness of self, intellect, physical health, emotional health, atmosphere, community, and expression. Those different eight dimensions make up a well person. And so what this event will be doing is to really be focusing on these eight dimensions. And so participants will have the opportunity to travel through each different dimension. So we will have outdoor vendors that will provide onsite services for all of these things. So intellect, so we'll be talking about workforce development opportunities, how people can learn. Um, emotional health, we'll have occup- um, outpatient mental health clinics actually onsite to be able to provide services and sign people up. This is not gonna be, oh, let me just walk around and get a little brochure. No, we're gonna be providing adequate services. We're also, um, so who's invited? All the Bladensburg residents, um, and any other community member that has been impacted by COVID nineteen. So why is this so important? This Mental Health Awareness Day presents a holistic process that includes every aspect of the SAMSA's eight dimensions of wellness. Residents needs to know that everyone has mental health, right? Sometimes we have a bad day, sometimes we have a good day. Um, and so mental health is normal, um, and so help is here. And by producing this event, we will provide an opportunity for all of our Bladensburg community members to address things that impact their mental health. Domestic violence, mental health crises, suicidal thoughts, violence, and trauma. Um, so how will this day work? As I shared, we'll have a journey to wellness, so we'll have different stations and different vendors that will be providing services. We'll have an entertainment main stage, we have artists secured, our DJ Flava. I'm gonna call, um, Councilwoman, Councilman Mendoza to see if he could, um, um, he can suggest a person that will be able to maybe do a song or something as it relates to representative of our community. Um, and we'll also have guest speakers that will use like stories, artwork, poetry, and other forms of expression to share their experiences and successes about recovery and what recovery means. We will have a presentation, um, from a clinician to talk about how to manage your stress and your mental health. Um, so we are still accepting applications for vendors and presenters. And if you have any, um, if you have any questions, you may call town, call town hall and talk to Ms. Diane about that. At the end of the event, we will be taking a My Peace pledge, and this is just a pledge, um, that we created, um, that we will give out, so everybody will pledge to love and support themselves and be able to seek help when they need it. Um, and that's another approach, um, to be able to really be mindful about our mental health and, and what we're gonna do to support ourselves through this wellness journey. Um, I'm going to be requesting that, um, the town of Bladensburg Town Council, if we would like to, um, have some type of proclamation, proclaiming the event. Um, I have already received, um, a response back from our county council. He is processing our requests, um, uh, county council chair Calvin Hawkins is processing our request as it relates to, um, a county council proclamation. I will also be requesting District Forty-seven proclaim this day in the town of Bladensburg. Um, and so this is just the My Peace pledge, um, that we are gonna pledge to love and accept the body that we have, choose to make positive decisions for my own mental health regarding to nutrition, um, care for the earth, um, because, you know, being environmentally savvy is a part of the eight dimensions of wellness. Consult with your own personal beliefs, values, morals that give your life meaning and purpose and contribute to the town of Bladensburg community by making the town of Bladensburg a safe place to live, learn, love, and grow. And so, um, I just invite all of our residents to, um, come out, um, and, um, you know, even if you don't have mental health, you may be able to, or, um, you know, a negative mental health experience, you may be able to, um, access some information that day that you'll be able to put, um, be helpful in, in your journey on wellness. We all have a wellness journey, um, and so I'm really, really, really excited. And so town of Bladensburg residents, if you fit any of those eight dimensions, please contact Ms. Diane Griffin. You're back.
Great, thank you so much for that presentation, Councilmember Rout. Any questions from the council or comments? All right. But, and the final item that we have was regarding trash collection services. Chief Collington, was that you or, um, um, another member of the team that was handling that item?
That was me.
Okay.
I know, um, that was Jocelyn Rout, can I?
Yes, Councilmember.
Yes, I'll, I'll be quickly, really fast, cuz I know we have a deadline. Um, so recently, we have received a couple, um, a couple, uh, just highly concerned, some highly concerns about, um, our current contractor, um, Bates, as it relates to our town, um, trash collection services. And so I just wanted to talk about the issues is that, um, Ms. Ma brought to my attention that sometimes the trash is maybe skipped over or missed. And then, you know, I call Public Works and, you know, they're really responsive with coordinating, um, a response so that we can be able to collect that trash or that, um, recycle that was missed. Um, but I do agree with a lot of the residents who have shared that they don't think it's particularly fair that our taxpayer dollars is going towards, um, Bates, um, and Bates is missing, and then we have to rely on, um, our staff because that brings them away from other projects that they have already, um, allocated. And I know I remember as a community, um, resident, we've had, we had a couple pro- uh, a couple issues before, and we were able to, um, invite Bates in to have a discussion so that we can be able to discuss how to mitigate some of these issues. Um, and so I think, you know, we're kinda slipping a little bit, so we may wanna consider, um, I was, um, suggesting one of two things, maybe to write them a letter, um, just letting them know some of the community concerns about some missed trash and missed recycle. Um, and two, um, allow them an opportunity to present at our next meeting so that we can be able to just have a discussion as it relates to the services. Um, so that, that was all I had, you're back, Mayor James.
Thank you, Councilmember Rout. I did see the one, uh, complaint that was shared, I believe with you, myself, and maybe it was Councilmember Mendoza. And I did follow up with Mr. Hall regarding that and, um, explained what the email stated. He did indicate that he followed up and, um, as a result, the supervisor had been going around just following the truck periodically, doing spot checks to help ensure that they don't miss, um, some of our resident deliveries. As you said, we are paying for those services and it is important to ensure that we receive them. Other concerns, though, that they did express is just making sure residents get their trash out early because sometimes we see other people's cans, and I'm saying it cuz I've been guilty, not realizing because the lid is closed, that trash has already been collected. And so I go to work, come back, and it's like, oh, man, I missed it, talk to a neighbor, and they'll say, oh, no, Keisha, it ran earlier than normal today, so that has happened as well. As it relates to the recycling, I do wanna be clear, that is not something the town is billed for. And that came up this time last year when we were talking about the contract with this vendor. We do not pay for that service. And Mr. Tenelli looked at our county tax bill and could not find where we're paying for it on there, so we're getting it free. F R E E, so, understand recycling is important, um, and Mr. Hall is on it. When they get complaints and understand the resident's concern is, we don't want you all, Public Works, having to collect it, we want Bates. But to say our taxpayer dollars are paying for the recycling is not quite accurate because we're not. That is a free service we're, we're getting. And so we do wanna work with them to make sure that they just don't miss households that they're taking their time to make sure that they collect all of the refuges. And then Mr. Hall suggested, um, and I believe he already reached out to try to set up the meeting to have them come in and talk with Acting Town Administrator Collington and himself about some of the emails that have come in of late. So, um, I know that action is happening, but I think, um, you make a good point. Let's have them come to the next work session as well, address the council members, also allow the public to hear, um, their responses to these concerns because, um, i- if one person is upset, then, you know, it's worth responding and looking into further. Yes, Councilmember Rout.
Yeah, so, um, it's not, it's, it's just the amount of complaints that we have received over the last few months is just concerning for me, um, representing my constituents that have reached out to me. It's been more than one, um, it's actually been like four over the course of four weeks. And so to me, uh, that is a red flag, right? Because over the course of four months, hey, like, I mean, one month, we've had four complaint. That means there's a complaint a week. We went a long time without, you know, a complaint. So, um, thank you so much for, you know, hearing my concern and allowing them to come to the next work session meeting because, you know, there's two sides to every story, and I would like to give them an opportunity to, um, you know, just provide an overview of, of the services that they offer. Thank you so much, you're back.
Absolutely, thank you for that. At this time, we've come to the end of the agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn tonight's closed session?
I saw move.
Moved by Councilmember Rout, is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of I.
I.
Any nays? The ayes have it, thank you so much. So we'll pause here and, um, let everybody take a quick restroom break and come right back for the council meeting.